All right, so. Are you ready to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
All right, I will call the meeting to order. And we have a member who seeks to participate virtually. So. We are. So is the. Andy, is the reason. Health or personal?
Oh, well, it's work, so I guess that would go in personal, so I'm in New York for. I had to do a presentation today.
Okay.
Okay. Out of town, does it?
Out of town, does it?
Yeah.
Board of Supervisors. Being out of town is satisfactory, so. I will make the motion that Director Johnson be allowed to participate virtually for a. Acceptable reason under our virtual meeting.
Under your remote participation.
Remote participation. All right, all in favor? All right, that wasn't a great start.
It's all up from here.
We have a forum. And are there any, anyone from the public who signed up to participate?
No.
No, all right, so approval of the minutes. So we have the minutes from March 6th and March 18. Is there a motion to approve? Well, first, are there any comments on the minutes? All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So, all right, is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, we have a new member.
Oh, that's right, sorry, I got so distracted. Welcome, Bill, why don't we do our, shall we do quick introductions around the. The room? And Bill can tell us a little bit about himself. So I am Don Long, I'm an attorney with Florida Pedit, and I am Chair of the EDA, and I'm the at-large member.
I'm Jeff Moal from Samuel Miller District and Vice Chair. My businesses are in Boston, mostly retail.
I'm David Storm on the Scottsville appoyee, I'm an attorney.
Steve, you and I were just getting acquainted, you know, we can do that.
Frank Friedman, I retired two years ago after serving for 23 years as President of PBCC.
Oh, excellent. Which district?
Rye.
Right, okay. Well, it looks like I'll be representing the Rybana District. I'm Bill Metchnick, I live in Milton area, frequent the Rybana District quite a bit, it's very diverse district as I'm. You know, discovering but familiar with it, I've been in town for, I don't know, 30. Years or so since, almost 30 years since 97. And I'm a landscape architect by license and education, most of my work is land planning. For various properties, so I deal with a lot of real estate and things like that, also deal with a lot of. Economic development related subjects mainly. Community, community development revitalization, economic development. It's a passion of mine, I grew up in a small town in New England. But. So that's something I'm very much interested in, very much interested in economic development, very much interested in quality of life. And how we can move the needle. In the county with, with that, with that metric as well as, you know, attracting, recruiting and, and. And retaining the appropriate scale and type of businesses in the right mix to. Obviously support, you know, overall equity and, and help in our, you know, our economy locally, so. That's a little bit about me.
Before we go to the rest of the table, Director Johnson.
Yeah. So my name is Andrea Johnson and I represent the Jack Jewett District. And I am formerly the CEO of Vanderland Recycling. In Troy, right outside of Mal County, and, but now I'm the Director of Operations for the Construction and Demolition Recycling Association. So I'm traveling a little bit more than I did previously.
I have some questions about recycling for you. And we're, we're very particular about separating, but.
It's, sorry.
Welcome, Bill, Trevor Henry Deputy County Executive, I work with Public Safety and Economic Development, I've been very active with the Defense. And Veterans. Sector in the community since 2018, and going to be part of the Brilliant Futures work.
Philip Stokely, Abumal County Board Supervisors, Rybana District.
I'm not Richie Deloria. I am Lauren Bodan, I am a Senior Assistant County Attorney for, in the County Attorney's Office, I'm just covering this meeting today for Richie, who is normally counsel to the EDA.
Emily Kilroy, the Director of the Office.
Ashley Greniterina, with the Business Development.
And Avery Thompson, Management Analyst with EDA.
All right, great, welcome, Bill, thanks for joining us. All right. Financial report. What? Andy, what you want to do, and why don't we let Avery?
That'd be great, yeah, no, go ahead.
Yeah, there are only a couple of things that changed, I added some of the new Go Virginia stuff that we've added over the last couple of months. One thing, although that didn't quite get reflected in this one, but has since been reflected since we posted this last week. Is the bond closing fees and some of the other bonds, you'll see here, the invoice that we sent out for the admin fact, we've collected the first round of those for the year. So next month in May, we'll see that is reflected. And then on the performance agreement side, again, I just added the Go Virginia one implementation, and then the PT Hotel Bond at the top is the other thing that's changed.
First one. Any questions or comments on the financials? All right. Unfinished business, nothing? New business, Stafford, I'm Marie.
Thank you, so welcome Director Metchnick. As you know, we have a vacancy in the Economic Development Office, the position has been posted as a Senior Manager for Economic Development. With applications accepted through April 24th. That deadline is sort of, is published out there, we'll take a look at that point at the applicants and make a decision if we're gonna start reviewing and inviting folks for phone screens, or if we need to do something different with that posting. So we'll continue to kind of update you all at meetings on how that is going. As Avery just mentioned, the PT Hotel Bond issuance closed, as expected, last month, which was great. The funds from the closing fee will be reflected in your May financial report, but we do, we can confirm that we do have those in hand. Wells Fargo is to purchase the bonds, and I know at least somebody had asked about the rate. And I was just able to confirm that, it's actually interesting, the structure of it is it's a variable rate based on market, plus 2.37%. And so the rate will change over time, right now, today, it's 6.5%, just for. Your edification. And, and then the April 16th Board Meeting, which is tomorrow, has two Economic Development Authority-related items. One is the Board Supervisors EDA MOU is on the consent agenda. If you've not been to a board meeting, the consent agenda is. Sort of a, a package of items that don't anticipate there to be a need to discuss out loud, and we expect that there's consensus from the Board to move forward with those. That said, anything can change, Board members can at any point ask that something get pulled from the consent agenda. But its inclusion in the consent agenda is sort of a recognition of the expectation that the Board has been, has had several conversations about the MOU, and is comfortable with the contents of the MOU. And so they'll be formally considering that tomorrow. And I'm not expecting at this point there to be discussion out loud about it, the consent agenda is considered by the Board close to the start of the meeting. And so pretty quickly into the session tomorrow, we'll know what that's looking like. And then the other work session that they'll have tomorrow afternoon is the Thriving Economy Chapter, so David Benish. Was here at the last meeting to talk about that Thriving Economy Chapter, you may remember that there's. That chapter will be a little bit higher level, and then kind of defer and point over to the Economic Development Strategic Plan for more of the details. And so tomorrow will be the Board's first discussion of that approach and the contents of that chapter. The staff will be available and serve part of the, the meeting tomorrow, and it's CDB's work effort, so they'll be presenting. But we'll be available to support any Q and A that we might be able to be helpful on, so we'll keep you all posted on that. And we livestream those meetings if anyone wants to listen, listen in for that discussion tomorrow.
It's open to the public, though, right?
It is, it is, anyone can come, it'll be in lay-in auditorium.
What time?
Uh, 1 o'clock. And as Mr. Williamson would say, there are usually seats available.
Good job. Or you can watch from the comfort of your own.
New seats, Bill.
Um, just an update on funding requests related to the Rybana Futures Project, Go Virginia is not, that's not new news to you that we were awarded funding. We are heavily underway on the design work that that funding is supposed to fund, which is really exciting, we really hit the ground running on that. And so that is putting us in a good position for the VBRSP program, that's the one that we've been talking about a lot, that request is for just under $14 million. Last month, we said that we had completed our March virtual site visit, and we're hoping that we would be invited to the final gate, which is an in-person site visit. We have been invited to that, that is happening the last week of April, we'll have a team of folks from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. As well as they've hired KPMG, one of the major accounting firms, to help them through their evaluation process. And so we've got a staff team that's working on making sure that we put on our best foot forward for that site visit, which we're. Again, just really excited to be sort of this far in the process. That is the final part of the process, and so after that, it'll be waiting to hear back on Notice of Award.
So which program was the?
The Virginia Business Ready Sites Program.
Okay, that's the port.
14 million.
If that doesn't come through, what's the, what's the next approach?
Yeah, so there's lots of, there's lots of paths that we could take still, so. And even within the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program, we haven't asked for $14 million. It's, it's not binary, and so it's not that we would get $0 or $14 million. There's a very high likelihood that they would say, we don't have $14 million to give to you, the budget for this round is $40 million for the whole Commonwealth. So it's probably likely that they would say, what could you do with $6 million? Or some smaller number, and so we would then work to, to sort of scope out, well, what would that look like? That would satisfy the funder's needs and also our needs.
This is for infrastructure, getting the road built, utilities, a pad-ready site?
Yeah, not, not the road, so VBRSP will fund utility work, they'll fund masquerading and clearing work. They. BDOT will, and so.
Yes.
The EDP has. Direct, essentially directed us to apply for the Economic Development Access Program through BDOT, because they, they want all road projects funded through the BDOT framework. The EDOT program is interesting, the county applies regularly for smart scale funding, for revenue sharing funding. One cannot just apply to the EDOT program, the locality has to be invited. Through other state processes to be able to access those funds, so that's not a program that the county has received funding from before. So this is our first go at, at that program, what's really nice about that program is it's streamlined, so the application process. Will run, based on when meetings are scheduled, it should be less than four months to get from start to finish on the application a Notice of Award. Which is very fast when you think about a BDOT funding program, and it's intended to be flexible. And move closer to the speed of business than the traditional programs, yeah.
You could say it.
Yeah. You know where I said. And then, you know, if we were to get $0 from VBRSP, we would look at, there's other potential funding opportunities, there's federal programs that would be a good fit for this, the work that we're trying to do out there. There's a lot of analysis of who's got funding and what's the right part of the project to break off and apply towards, and so we'll just keep working our list of. Of, of opportunities, this, the VBRSP program is just so perfectly structured to support this type of project that we're. We're feeling pretty good about our chances. But again, we'll, we'll keep looking if, if we need to.
We, does County have a grants coordinator, I imagine we do.
We do, we have a grants unit within the Finance Department.
That dedicated help economic development.
Yeah. All right, I'll do the next one. It's been a busy, it's been a busy month, spring, there's so many events to attend, so Ashley and I were at the Virginia Economic Developers Association. Quarterly meeting earlier this month, yeah.
Yes.
In Newport News, the theme this year is economic development, art or science, and so a lot of good programming on. How to tell your story and also how to use data to, to help you get what you are trying to get after for your community. Ashley attended a sort of a afternoon of sessions on storytelling, and I sat and heard from some site selectors, who are the, the firms that companies looking to locate a headquarters or a large facility will hire. To help them find the right locality and site for them. To understand, you know, their perspective on the process and how we can be hopefully together, you know, we can. Work at, how can we put ourselves in the best position for business attraction efforts? We also have been, the whole county has been at Budget Town Halls, last night was the seventh of seven. I think we all breathed a nice sigh of relief. Last night, we heard from, is there an estimate of how many community members we heard?
Average between 20 and 35.
Yeah.
Which I don't know what.
So probably a couple hundred folks all, in all attended sessions.
Interactive.
The best attendance that I've seen in my tenure with the county.
One of Ostrim's and one of Monticello.
That's the left picture.
Bund area.
Was there geography assigned to these, or was there just, was it at large, or?
Yeah, so one, one in each Magisterial District, and then one additional one in Southern Alamo. Also, the, the EDA supported. With some grant funding, the Beacon Commercial Kitchen Project, this is a couple, this is before my time.
This is three years ago.
Okay, so before several of yours' time, but this is a commercial kitchen project that is sort of the brainchild of the New Hill Development Corporation. They celebrated their opening two weeks ago, and it's shared commercial kitchen space for folks who, maybe they started off at the farmer's market. And are looking to scale their business, be able to create, produce a higher volume of product, they have, it's an incredibly impressive facility. Prep areas and flash fryers and.
It's located adjacent to the Belmont, I'm sorry, the Broadway Corridor there, about Belmont Pizza, right, so it's accessible to, to a lot of the community there, too.
Yeah, so really exciting celebration there.
Did you say the EDA supported that?
Yes, there was a.
There was a, a grant, a grant contribution.
$5,000, yeah, I think it was $5,000.
For us newbies, can you just real quickly tell us what the process was to get to that point? So if we understand how that happens?
We were approached, this, again, I think this goes back about three years, we were approached by. The New Hill Project, the New Hill Development Corporation, with the, the concept of, of this, this project. And the, like, like often, oftentimes, groups will come and present here with the, with the. The best, best wishes of the County Executive's Office and et cetera to, to present their concepts here. With the hope for the EDA to provide support either through. The, the sort of nestled policy of state and federal grant matching, which is. Pretty much the protocol for how, how we handle a lot of the state and federal grants, but from time to time, projects like this that aren't necessarily associated with the, the state or federal program. Organizations will come and present to the EDA for consideration for funding, so ultimately that would be taken into. Into closed session or. Or, or determined, you know, on the, on the spot, but that, that's the way that people can, they can.
So they made a proposal for a specific.
They approached staff, they approached staff initially, who vetted the, the program and, and got information regarding. The scope of work and development and the return on investment and the social impacts, et cetera, and then we're.
We gave him 25.
25, thank you.
How much?
25,000. It was a grand dollar.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think it was tied into, they needed to have a certain amount of cash in order to get loans, because they got loans, and I think that was part of the funding. That we did.
Yeah, and agribusiness slash food processing is one of the cluster sectors that the Economic Development Strategic, Strategic Plan Consultants are looking at. And one of the data points that they shared in their initial analysis was, in economic development, you talk a lot about location quotient, so. At the US average number of any given sector is pegged at one, where is your community relative to that, and agribusiness and food processing, we're at 2.3. So we have a, we have, we, way more agribusiness and food processing than you might expect in our community, and a lot of that is. The wineries and the breweries. But, but also, but also the types of producers or. Types of businesses that would, that would benefit from this project, so, again, like the, the farmer's market type folks who do granola or tomato sauce or smoothies. That they're looking to get on shelves in Whole Foods or other markets that, that would allow them to really scale their business, sort of that, to that next level.
More often than not, it's cost prohibitive to, to process a lot of, a lot of these products, so, much like the big surprise at the end of the meeting today. The shared-use kitchen concepts and shared production facilities really do help. Spread that opportunity for a lot of producers to access.
But we do not have a formal grant process, you know, basically, somebody. Wants to come to us, they come to us and say, hey, here's what I'm interested in, here's what I want, it's something we've talked about. On different occasions as to whether we ought to have a framework for valuing these grants. We've never gotten so many that it was ever an issue, but we have talked about whether. As they come in, we ought to have something to evaluate them with, one of the things that I think is important about strategic plan. Is I think it will help us be able to say, okay, how does this fit into what we want, want to do?
Do we require status reports or follow-up reports for those for whom we provide funding?
Usually we do, I think, when, when a lot of the funds that we give are, go to match state funds, and so there's a whole framework in which they, they do that, but. Yeah, I don't know. For this one, I don't know what, I can't remember what we had.
Seems like it would be a good practice to require some sort of. Status report, whether it's six months, a year, or whatever is appropriate, just so that we know what they've done with the money and what they've accomplished. They could come back for more money if they're hitting a home run.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good point, thank you.
The Piedmont Pitch, if you've been around for a minute, you may have recalled that this has occurred for the last two years, this is year three. And it's an initiative between the City of Charlottesville and Abumal County's Offices of Economic Development, we work with the Virginia, the Central Virginia Small Business. Development Center just across the road there, they, they offer some business, business essentials training. For entrepreneurs and small business owners that are interested in competing in a pitch competition for a total prize. Bucket of $15,000, and it's comprised of entrepreneurs in the city and the county. So they, they meet a, a certain level of credential, of criteria, and have access to the business essentials training that the CVSBDC provides. They submit a business plan, and the top six of the 40-odd applications that we've received thus far. For that opportunity to, to pitch for, for those prizes, and you may recall, I put, I sent out a request for. For, for judges for that event, that's later in, in May, and Director Hood has, has offered, Don really likes to do it, and if you don't want to do it, he'll, he'll probably arm wrestle you for it.
That's right.
Right, right, but so if it happens.
Did a good job last year.
It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun.
It's a really, it's a really good event.
And it's, it's free to attend, so, you know, if anyone ever, if, if anybody wants to go, just let me know and I'll.
So the five people like Phil Potter, what, what, what do they have to do?
So that's, that's the second, I'm gonna tee Emily up for her, yeah, it's a, it's a lot of, there's a lot of community engagement going on.
Okay. So, take it away. Two, two item.
So on Thursday, as part of the TomTom Festival programming, I'm not sure how I wound up on this panel, but. We'll be talking about the 29 North Innovation Corridor, so this body has had a presentation on that in this calendar year. And this is part of the effort to tell the story as broadly as we can and get as much buying as we can. We're really excited about all the future potential in the 29 North area, I mean, I think everybody else should be too. And so Nikki Hastings with Civil Biohub will talk a lot about the Commonwealth Bioaccelerator Project and some of the other work that Civil Biohub does. To continue to build the biotech sector, Dr. Phil Potter will be talking about the National Security Data Policy Institute and the work of the School of Data Science and. The Baton School of Public Policy and the work that they're doing to continue to integrate research in the machine learning AI. Space in, in the national security and intelligence sector, Rebecca Ivins is the Chair of the Defense Affairs Committee, and she'll be talking about some of the work that the DAC does. And then I'll be there talking about. I'm trying to sort of tie together why economic developers in the region are so excited about some of the opportunities here, and the work that we're trying to do to sort of leverage the opportunities that we think are. Are, you know, sort of started, the seeds are planted, and the work that we can do to try to help make sure that we take advantage of those. And then, you know, the TomTom Festival in general is a wonderful event, programming starts Wednesday and runs through the weekend, so encourage anyone to check out the schedule and see if anything works.
So is this an event with a date attached to it?
Yeah, so this is Thursday, the session starts at 2:15. And it's, but it's part of a whole conference programming day, yeah, Thursday.
Do we have tickets?
I can get you some. So you shoot me an email, yeah, shoot me an email if you'd like.
It's, it's, it's really good, I mean, there's a lot of really good, there's some good civic engagement plans and community development, so it's a great, they, they've done a great job.
Where does it help?
Most of the programming is at the Code Building, just across the way, Common House also has some of the programming, and I think the Vols, which is in the former Bradbury. Or the Bradbury, the former bank building.
Online, they have an interactive schedule too, that, that explains where a lot of the, there, there are a lot of overlapping events and, and sessions. Sure, just a, a quick recap, since we, since we met last, those are our account for our business retention expansion activity. I mentioned last meeting that we're moving forward for Q2 for information technology and intelligence and national security. So by all means, push, push leads my way, I'd love to, I'd love to connect with folks in, in that sector, and would be more than happy to. Have, have folks join if, if everyone was amenable. But, yep.
Excellent. All right. And then a little bit of a waitier strategic plan update, you all know that we had the consultant team here the last week of March. And we, we had two full days of work, 7:30 AM to 6:30 PM. Talk, talking, just talking to people. And so we were with 85 folks in the community over the two days, we organized. A series of sector-based roundtables, and we partnered with local organizations that work in those areas to sort of convene those sessions, that worked out really, really well. It's one thing to get an email from the county saying, we'd love to listen to you, it's another thing to get an email from a trusted partner to say, hey, the county really wants to listen to us. And please come to the session, so that was the approach that we took, we think it went really well. We. I guess that's it for this slide, I'll take the next one, some of the key themes, what I think was most shocking was, we, we had, you know, agri, when you have agribusiness. Um, some of the key themes, uh, what I think was most shocking was we, we had, you know, agri, when you have agribusiness and intel, national security and biotech together. On the same piece of paper, it feels like, what would the overlap be among them? Um, it was incredible, the themes that we heard across, that cut across the, the sessions that we held. Um, uh, so these are some of the key themes that the consultant team sent back to us. Um, Alamo has a lot of assets, um, but a lot of them are under leveraged. Um, growth is happening, but infrastructure is keeping up. Infrastructure being, um, roads and broadband. But also, um, sort of the infrastructure of, um, how development happens. Um, zoning regulations permitting processes, land constraints, um, space availability. Kind of all wrapped into that one. Um, we have a ton of talent graduating every year from PBCC and the public high schools and the University of Virginia. Um, but they moved, um, they don't stay here. Um, and so that's a huge opportunity that we can, that we can work on. Uh, the next one.
What, can you go back one second? I'm sorry. Um, cold storage.
Yes.
Could you?
Um, that was the, that was from, that was generated by the agribusinesses. Um, and what, what that, that's a really specific example that I think you can put in a, you can summarize into a higher level theme of. Um, agribusiness at scale requires light industrial type infrastructure that are, um, that you cannot do in the rural areas of present. Um, and so we have rural. Agribusinesses located in the rural areas who to do the business part of agribusiness. Need access to cold storage, warehousing, transportation, uh, loading docks, warehousing. Um, and those are things that you can't build in rural area.
It depends for a cop plant.
Because, yeah, because of zoning and the cop.
Sorry, guys.
Wonder who can change that.
Working on it.
Just wondering.
Just a quick comment on the last part on education, something I happen to know something about. Um, Wayne Yancy with Cardinal News just published an article about the retention of college graduates in the state of Virginia. And if my memory serves me, five years after graduating, thirty nine percent of UVA grads are still in Virginia.
Yeah.
And UVA is the lowest, um, other than maybe one other that I can't remember. And in the community college system, including PBCC, seventy seven percent are still in Virginia five years after. So it's worth differentiating rather than lumping them together. There's a huge difference and obviously, one of the things that we need to concentrate on in the talent area. Is keeping more of the UVA graduates in this region. Where, where, there's a real talent drain. And that was Wayne Yancy's point, the whole state has a talent drain of college graduates leaving the state. And he's got it for each of the colleges and university. My memory's not good enough to tick them all off, but I certainly looked at the local ones.
Yeah, if you think about public, the, the funding that the state provides to the public university college system. You know, if all of those, if we're paying to educate all of those students and they don't stay in Virginia, you know, is Virginia getting the benefit of that investment?
Well, sure seems like all the architects, you didn't stay here.
We can, we can take that the other way, right? Thirty and forty years ago, the percent of funding for UVA or Virginia Tech coming from Richmond was a much greater percentage than we see today.
Yeah.
Right? So when you talk about, you know, are we getting our money's worth? I would say we might be because that share that's come from Richmond is not where it was. If you look at where in-state tuition was thirty or forty years ago.
Also, a third of UVA students start from out of state.
Correct.
So there's not an expectation that they would stay in state. So you have to consider the, you know, the different ramifications there.
Anecdotally, however, after about ten or twelve years, many of them, they'd want to come back to raise family.
There's a gap there.
So that gap five year, I'm, I'm curious as to what that number would be for ten or fifteen.
This article did not look at that, but you're exactly right from just anecdotally. It appears that way that when they have a couple of kids and they've been out of college for ten or fifteen years, then this area is very attractive.
Yeah. So I propose an experiment. How do I get my daughters to stay here and not skip that step of leaving to New York or wherever?
It's called your basement.
Well, that gets to put something that's probably on the next slide. The next slide.
The previous set of data had the thing about the missing middle.
Yeah, missing middle.
Yeah, and housing, yeah. That was the previous set of data that the, um, that the consultants gave us. So this is, this is really just what we heard, um, back from folks. Um, so there's a, there's an economic development ecosystem, um, there's biotech ecosystem, you know, all the major sectors have kind of groups of folks who work in that sector a lot. Um, this ecosystem is collaborative, um, but fragmented. So there's, there's so many organizations, there's so many people. And they're doing similar things, but slightly different. And it can be hard for, um, an entrepreneur to know where to start. Um, once they get to the right group, it's a highly collaborative area. And we heard that across the different, um, uh, focus group sessions as well. Um, Alamo Rural's identity is powerful but unclear. Um, we heard a couple of times a, a, a similar comment that sort of went like. Everyone talks about Alamo County as a great place to live. Nobody talks about Alamo County as a great place to do business and work. Um, and how can we not lose great place to live, but emphasize a little more a great place to do business?
We talked about.
Yeah, we heard, we heard it a lot, which is really.
Living life, but still.
Yeah.
Riving.
Um, and then economic development must be bold focused and values aligned. So don't lose the things that we all love about this community. Um, but, um, on the, in the vein of diversify the tax base, um, a little bit more. Um, how can, how can we, you know, make some smart bets, um, and some, some smart investments to be able to really, um, shift that a little bit, um, for the community? Uh, so that was kind of the themes from the focus groups. Um, you know, everybody mentioned affordable housing, everybody mentioned, um, challenges with recruiting big career professionals. Uh, which we saw in the age data in the first round, um, that we don't have a lot of sort of the twenty five to forty five year olds in our community. Um, and so that, that felt like a consistent theme around sort of missing a middle, um, of sorts. Um, we also received, um, a hundred and ninety pages of charts, um, related to the cluster analysis work that the. Um, um, that the consultants did. So I hope you guys brought your jammies. Um, we're not going to go through all of it. Um, these were the six sectors that they analyzed. Um, they were selected because, uh, some folks asked, why isn't higher ed on here? Why isn't the hospital or healthcare on here? Uh, they focused on trade in sector jobs or, um, sectors. So, um, where you're selling services or goods outside of the community. Um, and so that, that was where, that's what drove that focus. Um, we looked at things that hurt, where sort of legacy have been part of our focus for several years. Um, and also, um, bringing in some emerging opportunities to take a look at what, um, the future, what some, how to guide that idea of smart investments. Um, there's a strong regional specialization in food processing and agribusiness. Um, bioscience and life sciences has been a key driver of economic growth. Um, that's the highest, um, gross regional product value of all the sectors that were analyzed. Um, it's also a low automation risk, um, when you think about future resiliency of any of these sectors. Uh, next slide. Um, the intelligence and national security cluster faces some workforce challenges. It's a high, the population is high retirement age eligible. Um, and so that can just create some uncertainty when you have such a high proportion of that here. Um, a benefit of, um, that sector is that there's supply chain requirements, the things that they're procuring from other businesses and, and providers is high. Um, there is, um, there were some job losses over the past five years in that sector. And so it's just something to watch. And I think a lot of the work that we're doing right now, um, with Revanna Futures and some of the ecosystem work that we're doing is, is actually part of, how do you, how do you solve for that? Um, business and financial services has been a target sector for, um, the beginning, since the beginning of the economic development program. It's a diverse cluster, but it takes, it faces potential talent challenges. Um, it has a high automation risk. Um, so a lot of those, um, services are provided differently than they were before. Um, they don't have, um, a lot of them are remote type positions now. And so you don't have like a, an office need like you did in the past. Um, and so it's, it's a sector that has a lot of transition, um, based on kind of the world around us. Um, and, um, we're not super competitive, um, right now with wages in that sector. Um, although, um, there, it has a, a lower educational attainment of our workforce than national averages, which suggests that here there's a, a lower barrier to entry into that space. Um, clean tech and renewable energy is a fast growing cluster. Um, in Alamo, it's primarily building, we're building trade, so solar installers, solar maintainers, um, type jobs. Um, Charlottesville has a lot of energy innovation jobs, um, with some of the companies that are located in the downtown area. Um, it's a clean energies in the city's economic development strategy. Um, the picture in Alamo looks a little bit different than, than what we're seeing in the city. Um, and then IT has really high earnings and growth potential. Um, our cluster isn't, hasn't strongly competitive when you compare us to other places yet. Um, there's been some really key investments made, um, at Virginia Tech and UVA. As part of the broader state strategy to attract the Amazon HQ two project. Um, the, they, uh, tech and UVA have both invested, um, more than many other universities across the country on data science programs. Um, which, uh, means that there's just some interesting opportunities on the horizon for that sector. Okay, so where are we? Um, we are, right now, the consultants are working on, um, a draft framework. Um, we'll be meeting with them, um, it looks like the very first week of May to, um, get sort of a first pass at that. Um, and then we'll be, um, working on what sort of next steps look like. Um, we'll be doing a work session with the board of supervisors in May, um, to, um. Make sure that we're still kind of on the right track with the feedback that they gave us at the front of the process and some of the conversations that we've had with the board throughout. Um, and then, um, you all have on your calendar in August thirteenth, joint meeting with the EDA, or with the board supervisors. Um, where the consultant will come and deliver, um, the report. Um, and it's the board's action to take. So that we're expecting that the board would be in a position to take action on that day.
Is that August thirteen meeting? Uh, is it possible to attend that by Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I know a couple of folks had a.
Yeah, I'll be out of town on that date, but I could attend by Zoom.
Yeah. Um, and then just this, we showed this last time, um, so we've got some, some new dates filled in here. Um, but these are some of the key meetings that are coming up, um, that have a, an impact on economic development.
And then I guess if there was a need or a reason we could have a meeting to talk about the, between that, May twenty one and the final adoption.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly June meeting.
Yeah.
To do enough to talk about.
Yeah, we could, we could, um, we can make an agenda item, sort of a work session for this body as well. That's the staff report.
Any questions on staff reports? All right. Okay, um, so I move with the Alamo County Economic Development Authority. Enter a closed meeting, approve a closed meeting. I'm not sure what ending word is, uh. Go into a closed meeting. It's authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Thank you, Ashley. Section two point two dash three seven one one A of the Code of Virginia under subsection six. To discuss and consider the investment of public funds related to an economic opportunity fund performance agreement with Bonumos Inc. Where bargaining is involved, where a public initially would adversely affect the financial interests of the county. And subsection eight to discuss and consider consultation legal counsel regarding specific legal matters. Related to Bonumos Inc. Performance Agreement, which requires a provision of legal advice by such counsel. And subsection twenty nine to discuss and consider the award of a public contract related to the performance agreement. Bonumos Inc. That involves the expenditure of public funds, a public discussion of which would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the EDA regarding the terms of the performance agreement. So a second.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
All right.
Well, it's a tricky word.
Yeah, that's right.